...obsession of the Swan County School Board and Swan County Board of Commissioners. Today is July 24, 2018. Our agenda, they have it here before us. The, I'd like to welcome everyone here. A lot of folks that I recognize and I do not recognize. Commissioners, thank you all for being here. Baker is here, yes, our parents. Thank you all for being here. And I think you all, if you're not familiar, in the back of the room, if you go through the door, key right, going out, ladies' restroom on the right, women's restroom on the left. Coffee to take here if you need coffee, stay away, some water. I guess that might be about coffee and water, I think, so we're kind of poor on this side. All right. So, welcome you all.
At least y'all have some. We don't have some.
All right. So, welcome. And at this time, we're going to stand and we're going to have to place your phone. Please welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to, with your assistance, Lieutenant Ted Rimes, who's going to lead us on from this point.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Taylor. And again, welcome to everybody in the room. We've got a good representation of a lot of folks that serve various roles throughout the county. And we're just pleased to have everyone here today to talk about some very important issues. Everybody knows that as the whole world of our networks, speaking of our online networks and our data and the security around all those different pieces, has gotten to be more and more of a concern over the years. There's been an increased exposure, if you will, for lack of a better term. And so, we have today Mr. Vance Baker, who is an individual that is an expert in the field. I can't remember how many years Vance, but that you've been, I know you've been working with us for a long, long time in other agencies here within the county. And so, there has been some interest expressed on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, potentially in the board, to talk about a potential shared services type of agreement to potentially have multiple things that we do on an annual basis in which our networks somewhat are, they're separate, but there's a data file storage and those types of things that I think we try to help each other out with to a certain degree. So, I am by no means an expert in this field. And so, before I sound any more ignorant than I already do about the subject, I'm going to introduce Mr. Vance Baker. We're glad to have him here today. And Vance, if you would step forward and help fill in the gaps, as far as your introduction, it was probably subpar. I apologize for that.
Oh, fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for the time that the board has shared with me, and thank you for the time that everyone that's in attendance today has shared. I have served Swan County for coming up on 18 years now, predominantly with the school district, helping construct first network, designing the first network for the school district, and watching that growth occur over the years and the Swan, Swan. And helping protect the school district specifically over those COVID, that approximately 18-year period. That comes with a, that comes with similar expertise with other school districts, other government entities. I built networks for several of the prominent colleges in the state, including St. Leo, Southeastern University, Pasco Fernando Community College, and so on and so forth, and got them, if you will, moved into the age of electronic information and education delivery and served as the security officer for those networks. Concurrent with about the time I joined or provided first beginning providing service to Swan County, I was actually the acting chief security officer for the Florida Department of Education, securing the infrastructure in the Turlington Building in Tallahassee, but also the outreach, if you will, for the Department of Education as it was, as it was making its presence more widely known throughout the state of Florida for purposes of information dissemination and technology dissemination into the various school districts throughout Florida. So, that, that history said, if you don't mind, I would just like to jump right into the presentation today. And I'd like to make this as interactive as possible so that as you, if questions arise and are points require clarification, please don't hesitate to jump in with any questions that you may have. Okay? Yes, sir. Thank you. The discussion topics today are going to be four, primarily talking about the legislative and compliance posture of not only the school district, but the county at large as it exists today. Some of the challenges that we encounter within Swan County today, but more importantly, challenges that are evolving because of some of the legislation that was passed in 2018, and some of the mandates that, some of the mandates that came to us legislatively prior to this calendar year. The concerns going forward, we won't spend much time on that because that, many of these concerns have been discussed with some of the elected officials, but certainly I want to present those to you for any ideas or concepts that you may have to share. And then finally, we'll talk about moving forward. Some of the, some of the, some of the technologies that we, within the county, are going to be faced with in terms of adoption, conversion, and achieving compliance with various regulatory agencies, whether it's the U.S. Department of Education, Florida Department of Education, criminal justice information system, the court clerk's information system, so on and so forth. So, with that said, sir, the, thank you. These are just a few of the legislative compliance programs that we operate under today, both the school district and the, and the other county agencies represented here today. The most prominent and probably the most, probably the most advertised, but maybe the least understood, is the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Act of 2018. This act imposes a tremendous amount of responsibility on both the school district and law enforcement within the state of Florida. And that responsibility is, quite simply stated, going to expand over the year term. Okay? Essentially, there was a, as you all know, there were a number of funds that were allocated by the legislature for achieving compliance with certain security provisions within the school districts. These funds are really the tip of the iceberg of what is going to, what is going to accrue to the county, to the various school districts within Florida. So, we're going to have to get creative. We're going to have to get very creative about how we're implementing programs that are achieving compliance with this act alone. And it's going to require collaboration in both the information security space, but as well, both logical and physical, but also in the sharing of information technology with other agencies around the state. Other areas that we're exposed to with respect to compliance and legislation is the HOPE Scholarship Program that expands the charter school's presence within the school districts, which means that there's an equivalent expenditure, there's an equivalent requirement, if you will, to the extension of funds, resources, technologies, and access to information systems as charter schools become more and more prevalent within the state of Florida and within Swan County specifically. The Florida Information Breach Protection Act of 2014 puts a huge burden upon every county within the state of Florida to report breaches of information when it becomes, when it becomes publicly known that that breach has occurred. When I say publicly known, I mean within the, within the agency, within the entity that storing that data, responsible for that data, and more importantly, responsible for protecting that data. So, that burden alone is placing a sense, a sense of elevated urgency, if you will, on the counties to achieve compliance and make sure that there is knowledge vested in within groups, if not with direct, if not within directly the IT sector, supporting individual offices to identify when a breach has occurred and report that that breach has happened to state and follow-on regulatory agencies. And then finally, the GDPR, the European Union General Data Protection Regulation that became effective on 25 May of this year, that is having global repercussions because, quite frankly, that legislation is taking privacy to an entirely new level throughout globally. Okay? That being said, while it may apply to the EU today, the acceptance, the focus on privacy and the insistence that only the data pertinent to the business function at hand is kept and maintained by an organization is gaining speed and quickly being adopted by other countries globally. The predecessor within the United States is the Safe Harbor Act. There's actually rumblings within Congress right now to transform the Safe Harbor Act into something that resembles the General Data Protection Regulation. Compliance mandates that we're responsible for today, the sheriff's office and the court's office are responsible for the criminal justice information services compliance. And great news, great news. We just completed an audit, a segest audit with the sheriff's office, and we put a lot of effort in that. That was, that was very successful. We met, we complied with that audit and achieved applying, an amazing passing grade, to the extent that we actually even got a letter of commendation, I believe, from FDLE. Okay? So, Swan County, because of the efforts that we have been undertaking within the past year, have made strides that are being unparalleled by any other, by no other than the largest counties within the state of Florida. So, we got a great pat on the back from FDLE with respect to the success we achieved in that space. The criminal, the comprehensive case information system in the court's office undergoing tremendous change right now in terms of the amount of data that we've got to inject into that, but also the amount of data that we've got to protect. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act that will pertain specifically to the school district, putting increasing burden, increasing on us, on the school district to provide not only that information about, to provide not only information about student performance within the educational system, but to protect that data in such a way as it doesn't become, it doesn't become an item subject to the breach law, breach notification law. Okay? And then there are a number of other ancillary areas, ancillary areas, such as the HIPAA compliance requirement for our fire and EMS groups and the, and the record retention requirements as mandated by statute and regardless of Florida Administrative Code. All of this rolls up into a tremendous amount of information security responsibilities for the school district, for the county at large, and IT organizations that support all of the county entities that fall under the purview of these various legislative and compliance requirements. So, where does that take us? Okay? That takes us to looking at our information challenges and where we are today as opposed to where we are probably going to be within 12 to 24 months. Okay? What we're, what we're looking at today with respect to the areas where attention is needed includes, includes data protection, a county-wide IT strategy that really is conspicuously missing today in terms of what the county-wide protective posture should look like. The shared information technologies, I might add on this point, we've made great strides. We have made tremendous strides within just the past year with respect to how we're sharing information technologies and how we're establishing inter-agency relationships between the school board, other county agencies, and county agency to county agency within Swan County. Again, from my experience in working with other county agencies, Swan County is setting the benchmark in this space. We are, we have got mechanisms in place today because of these shared resources, shared relationships, courtesy of the various boards that are allowing these, the board of county commissioners, the school boards, courtesy of the allowances. We're making strides that are unparalleled elsewhere within the state. We, other areas where attention is needed is in standardization of IT infrastructure and architecture, you know, using the same tools, using the same platforms, using the same resources for economics, for cost containment, for enjoyment of economies of scale with respect to sharing standards. Okay? Replacement of end-of-life and end-of-support technologies. I don't, I don't think there's any guesswork in this regard. We all know that at some level, we have been or we are operating with end-of-life and end-of-support technologies. An example would be an end-of-life technology that the sheriff's office just replaced this year. They adopted a new, a new public safety application, and that, quite frankly, was, that, quite frankly, was a challenge because we were adopting that application at the same time that we were undergoing a criminal justice information system audit. So, we were having to put square pegs in round holes for a period of time to make that application function, get it up and running, to display an antiquated end-of-life technology while we were demonstrating to the state that we were in fact compliant with all of the criminal justice, with all of the criminal justice requirements that, by the way, are federally mandated, not state mandated. Okay? And finally, on the attention needed side, we've got inconsistent information use and protection policy. We have got, within the school district, we have had, we've had the good fortune of being able to put a decade or more into our information policy. And we've got a very comprehensive information security policy, whereas within the other county agencies, we're not quite so, we're not quite so progressive, meaning we, we have some work to do in that space to define that policy, to define the protective mechanisms, the rights and responsibilities under those, under those policies, the privacy requirements under those policies. So, we're, again, we're making headway in that space, but we're kind of moving not quite as rapidly as we have, say, in other areas, specifically the effort that we were able to bring bear with the school board. So, one of the technology challenges we're action is in fact required over the near term. Vendor coordination and resource standards. Again, going back to that concept of establishing standards so that we can enjoy economies of scale, we really need some, we really need some direction, if you will, at the county level. What are the tools we're going to use? What are the resources we're going to buy? And what are the, what's the equipment that we're going to invest in so that we can, in fact, get the best bang for the taxpayer's dollar? Okay? Compliance enforcement. We've had some challenges within the county in that space, meaning that when we have adopted policy, whether it might be HIPAA policy, whether it might be a county security policy, so on and so forth, we've had some, we've had some difficulty, if you will, in how that enforcement of that policy came about. And it's not because we're doing bad things in the county, it's not because we're neglecting policy, it's because we never really thought about how we're going to enforce that policy, how we're going to educate users as to what the policy is, how we're going to let users know what they can and cannot do with their information resources, or how, how to best use the information resources they have at hand, and how misuse of those resources could impact not only their immediate organization, their classroom, for instance, but could have cascading repercussions throughout other aspects of county government. An example would be an email that might have been, might have had a virus included in it. It somehow made it through the scanners, it might get forwarded to somebody in the court's office. Okay? That has cascading implications throughout the county, as I'm sure you can imagine, and it has negative repercussions to the overall county. The incident, the incident experience earlier this year that shut down Atlanta for approximately two weeks was really because of that. Somebody got an infected email, somebody actually concurrently opened up an infected attachment on a USB drive, and that information, that information traversed all interconnected Atlanta networks to the point that all county agencies, for all intents and purposes, had to close up shop, and Atlanta-Hartsfield International Airport had to reduce its volume for a period of time. So, the enforcement topic is really something that we want to look at over the near term. The enforcement topic is something that requires, it requires a coordinated county vision rather than a security policy here, a security policy there, and a compliance policy elsewhere. The adoption of cloud services is something that really is dear to you from in terms of the county-wide exposure. All of us in this room, if we're using email, we're using cloud-based services today. Okay? Many, much of the county has moved to Gmail as the email system. There are aspects of the school board that are in fact using Gmail or Google Mail as the messaging system. We're seeing other instances of cloud services that are being adopted by entities within the county, fire EMS, for instance, that while they're beneficial and they appear to be cost-effective, the reality is that they bring about new exposure, they bring about, they bring about security considerations that technologists have never really had to deal with in the past, let alone users of technology. Okay? So, these things are becoming more commonplace, more commonplace within county government, state government, federal government, these cloud services. The thing that really is missing among all of the governmental entities is how do we effectively use these services without compromising the data that we're charged to protect, without compromising the users that are in fact using those technologies? Over-budget technology projects, I don't think we need to elaborate on that other than the fact that we've all accounted for. Right? Technology projects that we were sold as a county that appeared very attractive on the, at the presentation stage, but when the rubber met the road, where we, when we actually implemented those technologies, we found out that they, that the overall cost of the technology far exceeded the budget, or far exceeded the financial allowance line So, again, there is, there is a need within the county to look at the cohesive nature of our information adoption activities and consider how those technologies interact, intersect various other aspects of our operating environment so that we understand that, oh, well, there's not just a, there's not just a school board aspect to this, there's also a sheriff's office aspect of this technology, which, oh, by the way, means that there is a judiciary intersection, which means the courts involved in it. There's this need for this holistic view to look at the overall impact of the technologies that we're adopting. Shadow IT groups exist within all of our organizations, and shadow IT is those informal technology users within your organization, that they're very, very expert at the technology that they use, and they, they can tell you very quickly what does not and what does function with those technologies. And they will quickly, they will quickly adopt, or they will quickly, they will quickly become an advocate for technology, but they don't necessarily have the requisite skills to, to understand how adoption of that technology has implications to other groups within the county, within state government. These informal technology decision-makers are some of your, some of your most attractive assets within your organization. These are individuals, are groups, that achieve amazing objectives. These are people that are extremely, extremely efficient, very versatile, and very talented within the accomplishment of their roles. Consequently, they are subject matter experts in the technology, but they're not subject matter experts at how that technology touches a tremendous amount of intersection points within, within a county government. So, these shadow IT groups or these information tech, informal information technology makers, they need to be encouraged, they need to be encouraged. But at the same time, they need to be, they need to be tightly held with respect to how that technology that they select, they adopt, that they're subject matter experts on, how they influence the technology adoption within the county. Okay? Just because an application looks good on your iPhone doesn't necessarily mean that that application translates into something that can be utilized effectively and safely throughout the county. And finally, a problem that we're all facing, all of us in this room, is centralization of telecom engineering. We have got a real hodgepodge of telecommunications systems out there, ranging from PBXs to voice-over IP to a combination of these things. And many of these systems are in fact end-of-life, end-of-support. They're costing the county a tremendous amount of money every month because they have reached that end-of-life and end-of-support, and the tech, and the, and the supporters of that technology, Windstream in some cases, are charging for the risk that they're accepting to support those technologies. We are, within the next two years, we're going to be severely challenged to realign how we look at, how we use, and how we adopt telecommunications technology within the county. We need a reengineering look, we need a vision as to what we're going to migrate to, and more importantly, we need to take into account all of the technologies that we use today so that we can pick those solutions that best accommodate where we want to be five, 10, 15 years down the road. Okay? So, some of the concerns that are generated as a result of the information I've shared with you today is realigning our governance and our compliance objectives, how they are achieved under the shadow IT model. How do we take all of those subject matter experts that we have within the county, very bright people? How do we bring them into the fold and become more efficient with our selection of technologies? How do we bring all of this intellect to bear to help maximize the value that the taxpayer is receiving for the county dollar spent on technology? for the county dollar spent on technology? Okay? Point number two, as we're addressing these shadow IT organizations, these subject matter experts, how do we keep the peace and not, not foster an environment where they become threatened as we're trying to, trying to progressively ramp up to a centralized means of control of technology, management of technology, and adopting technology at the most cost-efficient level possible? Okay? Peacekeeping is going to be the key term there because that's exactly what technologists, your technologists, are going to be doing over the near term as we attempt to grapple with that shadow IT problem. And that shadow IT problem is most prevalent within the information security space because while these technologists are very, very efficient, they're gaining benefit from the technology they adopt, they don't necessarily understand the risk and the exposure of adopting new technologies. We have language gaps. And I've probably created language gaps here this afternoon as I'm speaking to you because I've probably used terms that are not necessarily familiar to you. And these language gaps are probably going to, they're probably going to exacerbate that peacekeeping function that we're, that we're going to have to undertake as we're realigning technology use and how the technology decisions are being best made within the county. The language gaps, quite frankly, are, as in any language gaps, probably our largest barrier. Okay? How do I explain concepts to you in a manner that it makes sense to you while at the same time emphasizing the urgency or characterizing the very nature of the challenge that we're attempting to overcome? Okay? Addressing those language gaps is not so much an issue of terminology. It's not an issue of communication, as much as it is building trust. Trusting what somebody tells you is in fact reality, is in fact not something that has been made up out of a newspaper clipping or a, or a web article that just popped up that day. Okay? Going back to that compliance position for a moment. If in fact, we take the position that there needs to be some sort of centralized information security oversight within the county, we then take, we then have to extend our focus to the next level of concern. And that next level of concern is, will that role, wherever it exists, will that role be sufficiently empowered to promote, defend the regulatory, the statutory mandates that we're all subject to? That's a big question. That's a big question. Because we've talked about throughout this presentation, some centralization of governance, some centralization of architecture planning, some secure, some centralization of security and integrity assurance. If we, if we elect to take that path, is it going to be sufficiently empowered to ensure that the, the objectives that we've laid out are achievable? The, as we achieve these objectives, what is our professional exposure? Not only the individual or individuals that have the responsibility for making security, information security recommendations, okay? But the county officials, the elected officials who are charged with complying with statutory mandates. What's our collective exposure? If we fail to do it, we know what our exposure is. Okay? If we kind of, sort of do it, well, our exposure may be different. If we achieve our regulatory responsibilities, okay? What is the exposure then as well? Are we alienating people within our own workforce? Do we continue to retain those subject matter experts that, within our respective offices, in which we put our trust, in which we, we, we depend upon them to bring us recommendations of how to be more efficient in delivery of county services? So, we've got that exposure element to, to, to address. Assuming, assuming that a county-wide IT role in the form of a chief information security officer, or something such as that, is adopted, what is the vision for the responsibilities of that role? Is it defining IT strategies and standards? Probably. Is it protecting data and information resources? More than likely. Is it architecting solutions in conjunction with your IT directors? I would say yes. That's a hand-in-hand responsibility. Your IT directors understand the scope of requirements that they are operating under every day. But they may not necessarily be the individuals that are going to be abreast of the newest technologies available, or whether their requirements are unique to their environment, or their requirements actually complementary to other environments that exist within the county. So there may be some benefit in having this role also acting as an architectural authority for information technologies that are adopted, accepted, and purchased by the county. Vendor relationship and acquisition control. In approximately 18 years I've been with Swanee County, I've observed a few instances where vendors have come in. And because of existing relationships, they've not necessarily always afforded Swanee County the best deal possible. Okay? Because of our fragmented operating approach within the county. Okay? But more importantly, because maybe we didn't feel at ease in asking the difficult questions of the vendors. Are you in fact giving us the best deal possible? Are you in fact bringing the best breed technologies to, to the table for the, for the dollar that we're allowed to spend? Are you bringing a technology to the table and offering it to the county simply because a neighboring county uses it? Okay? These are questions that we need to be asking. These are questions that help bring the technology cost more reasonably as we're evaluating, as we're evaluating what we're spending taxpayer dollars on. Okay? Would this centralized position be responsible for compliance program oversight? Probably, probably. Value-add resource to existing IT directors? We discussed that? Absolutely. No, no doubt about that. Fiscal responsibility? There certainly could be a fiscal responsibility element to the role. Okay? Meaning that it would look at the, it would look at the budgets, specifically the IT components of the budget, and determine whether or not those expenditures are properly priced, determine if those expenditures can be actually bundled with other expenditures to achieve best pricing for, for the acquisition intent. And then finally, for the county-wide role, maybe all of those roll up to that position. You as the leadership of Swanee County, this is really your choice to make. Okay? So, with that said, assuming that a chief information security officer is a path that we want to pursue. These are some of the duties and responsibilities consistent with that role. And a proposed position description has been outlined that speaks to these, these respective responsibilities and duties. Let me just cut to the chase on this and say that this role is intended to be, or is discussed thus far. It's intended to be an advisory role. Okay? It's not a, it's not a "pissed on the table, thou shalt do" role. It's an advisory role. Okay? Because each and every entity that's represented within this room operates under unique, within a unique environment. Okay? What works for the sheriff's office may not necessarily work for the property appraiser's office and vice versa. Okay? So this role would be intended to be advisory. It would be the role that would be, that would review statutes, review compliance models, review, review the regulatory models that pertain to each of the entities throughout the county, and advise how to best achieve a compliance, how to best achieve compliance, and then represent those agencies during audits of compliance, such as the SEGIS audit that we just went through for the sheriff's office. And then the, and then the more pressing, probably the more visible aspect of these proposed duties and responsibilities is that fiscal responsibility. Ensuring that the budget best, the IT budget best meets the needs of the county, best meets the needs of the individual entities representing the county. And it is a budget that is achievable and a budget that can be, that can be expected to be on September 30th of the year, after the budget goes into effect, a line item that has zero cost overruns. Is that necessarily achievable? Probably not 99% of the time, maybe even not 90% of the time. But if we can get 90% efficiency or buck within our budget by having that consistency of oversight, that ability to look into those line items and understand the correlating influences, okay? It's very possible, it's very possible that we can achieve 90% efficiency in our budgetary processes. So I'm going to stop. I've put a lot of information on the table in a short period of time. What I would like to do is open the floor for any questions, any requests for elaboration, and let you guys speak for a while.
I guess we start with, I guess we can start with our board members here. Mr. White, any questions or any notes that you'd like to ask questions of Mr. Baker?
No, I think he covered from A to Z here on the lock that I just said one time.
It is, it is.
That's what I'm doing, is I'm trying to digest what all you were talking about. That's second thing over your head here, so I'm just going to listen to him.
I hope I can meet your expectations, sir.
Listen and let the IT guys ask questions.
Mr. Cason?
I'm just wondering how, if there is some type of strategy by which all of the agencies that are affected can kind of pull this thing together. Do you have anything to kind of suggest to kind of get them started?
Yes ma'am, I do. That's an excellent question, thank you.
Coming up.
I defer response to that question. I will have a presentation momentarily.
Mr. Sill?
Well?
Yeah. You know, my kind of, I'll wait as part of my question. That's my big question too, is what she had. And I, I get what you're saying, but we have IT, and I'm sure each agency has their own IT guy. We've got Josh, and four kind of commissioners has theirs. And why can't those four folks work together somehow, you know, to achieve exactly what you're saying here? Why, why does it need to be deferred to like another person for them to respond to? So I'll wait till you, you get to that part. Is that?
Actually, let me answer that question. If I'm right.
Why do we need this in my question?
That is, that is in fact a very valid question as well. And that, we reap some benefits from that model in the past, where all of the IT directors did in fact work together. But my role within Swanee County for the last 17-plus years has been the, has been the consultant, if you will. The guy sitting in the backseat saying, "That's the route you want to take." Okay? And that's worked well for 17-plus years, you know? It's, it's taken a little bit of a different curve within the past year. And I'll tell you why that curve has occurred. The, part of it is legislative, meaning that there's more on us, placed upon us to achieve compliance, to maintain and demonstrate compliance. But more importantly, that compliance now is crossing sectors. It's touching multiple IT shops. And each IT shop has their distinct vision of how that compliance is achieved, specifically with the Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Act. Okay? That is going to lead to gaps ultimately. Not because of the individuals involved can't analyze the statutory requirements, not because they can't interpret those requirements, but simply because there are in fact varying levels of interpretation that could lead to an instance of non-compliance, which then leads to, God forbid, casualties.
Sure.
Okay? So, the point of this role is to help orchestrate all of that interaction between the various department heads, to support the department here, not just say, "Take this road." Okay? But to support the department heads by saying, "You take this road, but mile and a quarter down the road, there's a gully that you want to avoid." Okay? The other thing that has changed is the IT people are on the front lines of demonstrating compliance now. They're on their front lines of engaging, participating, supporting, involving themselves in audits. Okay? Taking away from their operational responsibilities. And they're having to represent in those audits not only how they're compliant within their own subject matter expertise space, but how they are, how compliance is achieved in areas where they're not subject matter expertise. And let me give you an example to clarify that thought down. During our SEGIS audit, we have a, the sheriff's office has an amazing lady that's responsible for the documentation of various compliance, the soft compliance elements of the SEGIS policy. Okay? When I say soft compliance, documentation that training has occurred, documentation that certain certifications exist. Same thing you have within the school district. Okay? And that person was working with the technology director within the clerk's office to assemble all of this information to achieve the transmission of the compliance data to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement in Florida. Or Florida Department of Law Enforcement. What was missing, what was missing from that piece is that wide section of policy that speaks to technical requirements. Does your VPN, does your virtual private network have this kind of security on it? Do your servers have this kind of security on it? Do, are you federally compliant? Are you compliant with the federal requirements for information protection in transit and at rest? Okay? That's where I became involved, became involved. I can certify that because I designed, built, and to a certain extent managed that infrastructure with the sheriff's office. So, to your point, there is a greater need to orchestrate all of these functions as increasing compliance and compliance requirements of extended scope are imposed upon the increasing compliance and compliance requirements of extended scope are imposed upon the counties, okay? Does that help?
It does, because, you know, when this, when this news hits the street before dark of the day, you know, that we're talking about, you know, getting, yeah, it's already there probably, about getting, you know, a new person that's going to come in to do IT in the whole county, countywide, all the county. You know, I gotta, I want to be able to explain, well, why'd we do that? Why we spending taxpayer dollars?
Sure.
And everybody in the district's got to explain that. You know, why we're paying, we're spending taxpayer dollars to do something that we, could we have done it without doing that, you know, spending $110,000 on a whole person to come in and do that? So can I ask that question?
Between the two of us, we're already spending a certain amount on it anyway.
Right, right.
And we're just expanding on, on what he's already done, or what we're already paying for. So go ahead and ask the question.
Thank you.
Chairman Taylor?
My question, I don't have any doubt, but a lot of them's working together, it's more cost efficient, it's more efficient so far as cybersecurity is concerned, you know, if you, if everybody's working together, communicating together. My questions have more to do with how this whole thing will work operationally. Okay, first of all, would you, I mean, obviously, that's who we're looking at, you've been working with all the entities, so would you become an employee of the district, would you be a contractor? How would that work?
An employee?
An employee.
Yes, sir.
All right, so if you become an employee, then how do we handle health benefits? How do we handle our retirement system, those types of things? How do we handle workers' compensation? Who, how do we, towards all that part and parcel of the fees that will be paid?
That's probably something I can't address right now, but I can, go ahead, sir.
All right, and then to implement all this, obviously, it might be something, memorandum of understanding, my other thing being is it's spelled out here in the information we were given, that there will be a committee of four people, four elected people, that will basically govern and direct your activities on a daily basis.
Yes, sir.
Then still, you'll be housed at the clerk's office, and all major, most all communication will go through the clerk, correct?
No, sir, no, sir. That would, each of the, each of the members of the information technology, information technology committee have direct access to this position. The position, the discussion is on event, that would be housed at the clerk's office? Theoretically, it could be housed anywhere.
Okay. Because our information here says the day-to-day recording relationship for purposes of management will be overseen by the circuit court. So that's, that's managing your, your activities, I mean, what's said is the management. They might, the other thing is, I guess, then it would be, obviously, it would be like the sheriff is an elected official, clerk of the court is an elected official. And it would be whomever board of county commissioners, who would be their chairperson, and then it would be our superintendent of schools. That would be the full people that would, that would handle any kind of relationship. All right, so if we're going to have, is it going to be five?
Yes.
Okay. Well, right now, what we have said is it's going to be four.
We've been in discussion about it, me and Mr. Ouch and Mr. Baker, but that's part of what the workshop was for, to kind of discuss that back and forth. The way I've kind of envisioned it and wanted to discuss it was that, I mean, it's a joint effort, or hopefully it'll be a joint effort, and I didn't think that one single person needed to be an employee in the school board, board of county commissioners. I kind of wanted to use the model of the way we do parks and rec. You know, we partner with City of Live Oak, and we have a rec board, and then our rec director, therefore hired by the rec board. Now, if we can come up whatever way we need to, to pick the members of this board, but I figured representing every agency that he was responsible for, shared part of property appraisers, board of county commissioners, school board, circuit court, that that gives you your five members, would be kind of a good governing board to oversee.
And I'm okay with that, but then who's employee? Are you, would he be the employee then of that committee? Yeah, that to me is kind of a, kind of a gray area that I won't, I'm going to be farmed up myself, no. And then, you know, so when you sit at the table, then, you know, if there's five folks, five elected representatives there, and the school board, school superintendent being one of them, that kind of puts you in a voting disadvantage in a way, I think, I mean, if worst case scenario were to play out. So then how, you know, those are just some of my concerns, that, you know, how do you handle all those things? Say that you want to terminate, three would say we want to terminate, two would not, four say you want to terminate, one says no, or vice versa, you know? Obviously, that would be, that would be a four to one, three to two, that's kind of fairly easy to figure out. To me, it's just the complexity of it, who actually has the control, who's employee would you be?
From a, I'm just going to use an analogy from my working relationship with our district as a part of our consortium, Northeast Board Educational Consortium, it's made up of 14 different districts, many of you are familiar with that, some of you are not. But how that works is NEFEC has employees. Each district has a portion, a share, or a membership in the consortium that goes into that consortium that in turn, as the fiscal agent pays for and supervises those employees through that consortium. What I'm envisioning here, what I've understood to possibly be the case, is it'll be a governmental, Swanee County governmental consortium for these shared services, in which that board, just as the board of directors of NEFEC is made up by the 14 superintendents, vote on the budgets, they vote, vote on the directing of the workforce, employees, and those types of things. Similar type role is what I'm understanding the situation to be. I think the question that needs to be answered is, there's going to be, you know, benefits involved and payroll, there's going to be, there's got to be some fiscal agent, you know, where is, where are those benefits and that payroll is coming from? My understanding is that would not be us, it would be...
That's odd, that the county would be the actual employer, and everybody that's got a portion of the share of the budget funded to alive within the county, and then the county pays the salary.
How do you do parks and rec? Does it do the same way?
We already have a unique situation with the extension. We're the University of Florida Department with us to help pay for the extension office. So they, they, and they're part of the salary, and we do the same, but they get paid from us. And the HR department, I wouldn't imagine, there must be a term, but I don't think our HR department would manage that.
This, I'll tell you kind of how I've got to where I am with this, and the reason I'm going to move forward with it is, I see the county developing and growing, the school board, the school system's growing, and our IT needs, everything's going digital, and IT is just expanding. And what I didn't want to see is a little group of IT here, a little group of IT here, a little group here and here, and before it got, I mean, we've already, on our end, we've already split it once. And I wanted to try to get it all under one umbrella. And now, the way I understand this legislation coming on with the school system, I believe some of the IT services are going to be shared now between the sheriff's department and school, and our own on that. So really and truly now, all of us are touching, definitely. And if something comes in through y'all that affects sheriff, that affects us, or something comes in through public works, that affects clerk, affects sheriff, affects y'all, it has the ability to touch all of us. And that's kind of my thinking on it. Before we get too big and try to rein it all in, we need to get a floor from the front of it, and go ahead and get it all captured under this umbrella, and then kind of grow with it.
So I'm fully in support of what's being proposed, it's just hammered out, this is six of seven. Another question that comes to my mind, all of us are governed by sunshine law. Would sunshine law apply to that community, and they need, kind of governed by sunshine?
Yes, sir.
Now, those are just things that has to be hammered out, and fiscal agent, you all said you'd be the fiscal agent, that type of thing. And what I understand from the one part of the handout here is that, well, there's only four, four entities on here now, so would Mr. Taylor's coming on through property, property appraiser, would that be a part of the board of county commissioners or clerk and supportive agencies? Because it's broken down into equal payments of 27.5 for each entity.
Yeah, I, I, that's, I believe just going to be included, it's only the clerk's side, but I believe.
So $110,000, that would include?
Yes.
We fund those agencies.
Sir?
We do fund those agencies anyway, which brings the question that I have, the support of these agencies. Every constitutional officer, from my understanding from the clerk, every constitutional officer has the ability to pull its agency out of our IT support, out of IT support, and do its own IT support, in the sense of providing access, internet access and such like that, support for their, their infrastructure, or for their computers and such, hardware and software. My concern is, is we started in a process that all of a sudden we have a new elected official, for instance, I just, I'm, in any way, shape, or form, I'm not pointing to one over the other, but let's just say we had a new tax collector, and that tax collector said, we want to do things our own way, and we're going to go out to this company, we're going to contract with them to provide IT support. And then if it's an agency within the county that the county supports, or the county, who have alarm taxes, now we have to not only fund someone's salary, we also have to fund somebody's IT support as well on top of that. Is that a potential problem for the future? How are we going to get everyone on the same page as any, let's move forward with this, this is the way we're going to do it, period? Because we don't have no law that forces them to do it, right?
No, we do control their budget, they say, oh, they want to do it, we just say, nobody give me money to do it.
I mean, you would hope that we could work together as groups, but I mean, he hits a good point. It can happen.
Saying, yeah, how do you, once you're going down the road, how do you stay on that same?
The advantage, the advantage is that all of us are together, because like I say, we get those through different ways, we all touch somewhat.
Right.
And the more we can, you know, the more information we can share and have, the better we'll be as a community.
I think it touches on Chairman Taylor's discussion about how things are going to work, because all you got to do is take off the wrong person, and next thing you know, next election, you got a whole group pulling out. And I don't, I don't want to start something that we don't have the ability to control as a group, just because we have one particular agency that says, you know, and all of a sudden it's costing our taxpayers a lot more money. That's, those are some of the, I agree with, by the way, I believe in centralizing this thing, because of some of the things exactly you said in answering Chairman Taylor's question, we have to cover the gaps, but it's also, I've never had a fondness for IT support. I love IT, it's always been a thing.
Knocked you right out of the window, didn't it?
But I've always considered, well, I won't say what I used to call them when I worked in technology companies, but you pull them out of the closet, you get your answer, you put them back in, right? That's kind of what's, that's what I was always, so, but...
I'm responding to the line.
But you were very articulate today, so you're an exception, Mr. Baker.
Going to your concern, is that peacekeeping function? It's not only an internal peacekeeping function, it is a peacekeeping function among elected officials, okay? And I will amplify on that by saying that that's a unique skill, as efficient and effective tech support is a unique skill. It's not something you can commoditize, and it's not something that you can bring to the table simply because someone says they have the experience or credentials, okay? If I may be immodest for a moment, I would say that, I would say that I, I've demonstrated I have that unique skill. When I moved into Hillsborough County in 1996, I worked for a little, a little local telecommunications company called GTE, and they put me as their lead engineer for all of Hillsborough County operations. I thought, much to my chagrin, I thought I was supporting water and wastewater services, you know, putting networks out so they could monitor wells and holding tanks and yada, yada, all of that good stuff. The next thing I knew, I was supporting the clerk. The next thing I knew, I was supporting the court administrator, the public defender, sheriff's office, so on and so forth. And it wasn't that, it wasn't that they were drinking the GTE Kool-Aid, when I say they, I mean the county agencies, they weren't drinking Kool-Aid. They were seeing value in what I was bringing to the table, meaning that technology is a difficult concept on the best of days, okay? And technology, you either love it or you hate it, there's not much middle ground, you know, and if you love it, if you love it, there's always that need to take it one step further. If you hate it, there's always that need somebody to hold your hand through. And my take on that is, it doesn't matter which side of the spectrum you're on. You know, if you love it, I'm going to sit beside you and teach you how to use it better, or I'm going to learn how to use it from you. I'm going to cultivate that, I'm going to cultivate that affinity, so to speak. If you hate it, I'm going to find out why you hate it, and that's a challenge for me. Why do you hate it, okay? What can I do to make you tolerate it, and then maybe get excited about it, okay? So to answer your question is, while there is no law, there's no regulation, there's no regulatory oversight of what we're trying to do here, there is a personality oversight. And I wouldn't have been with Swanee County for 17 years if I didn't feel comfortable with what I'm doing here. So I hope that gives you something.
It does, it does, and I don't doubt your, I mean, I don't doubt you in any way, shape, or form. But just remember that elected officials answer to people who don't share
Yes.
your sense of support in IT services, or even their sense of support in IT services. So that's, my biggest concern is, is, you know, I'm elected to cut, I'm elected to come in here and cut the budget, I'm going to do everything, cut, cut whatever I don't, you know, whatever I don't want, or whatever my people don't want. And so, and that's, that's concern going forward, is how can we manage this in a way?
Sure.
That would help, so. I hate to play that devil's advocate, but that's kind of what I do.
I think we've got to look at it as an investment, to keep from having such a low, high level of exposure to this point where the size of the check that you write, if you have a data breach in magnitude that's possible, you're talking about, and HIPAA touches us as well, as well, with the number of kids that visit school clinics every year, and the amount of medical issues they bring to the table, and things that are being doubled. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's a countywide issue. You're talking about having an exposure that could be extremely costly to the district. I would, I would, I would be an advocate to the general public, say, this is, this is just like buying insurance for your car, that analogy, but let me use, it's one I know. The analogy is, is you hate paying that premium every month, but when you have an accident and you need that insurance, that's all of a sudden became an investment in protecting your, 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 your investment in your vehicle, that you're glad you had. And I see this kind of in the same way, in that there's such, just from the last week, I think I've gotten three different, much minor scale, three in the same night, that came to my inbox that I contacted Josh about, that had the names and titles of people that worked in county and state government with an attached invoice, asking for the school district to satisfy their invoice. And this is people that I have hundreds of emails from in my inbox. There were three in one night. And, you know, I got, Josh said, don't touch the attachment, don't touch the attachment. And so, you know, those are the things that scare me to death, and if there is a breach, and you don't have somebody on the job like yourself to help protect the school district, the county, and the sheriff's office, clerk's office, et cetera, from what can become of those types of things, I'd be afraid to sleep a night without it. And so, you know, as far as the school district's concern and my interaction with Mr. Baker during the tenure that I've been in the district, I've been back here 15 years, he's been here 17, and, you know, I can tell you that my firsthand experience has been that he's been a valuable resource, to heading off problems before they manifest into really, really big problems. That's my two cents. I think we can overcome the organizational aspect of how it's going to work, how it's going to operate to satisfy the need, you know, to put some issue... how it's going to operate to satisfy the need, you know, to, to put some issues, to put some, put some sand, if you will, on, you know, how does the, you said personality conflict, or how does that not come into play? There's got to be some, some models out there that we can look at. These things already exist that help address those things, given that we all have local individual sovereign boards that operate under their own legislative authority at the local level and still be able to maintain and, and, and experience the, you know, the benefit we can get from this type of service. So I think that's in my mind, we're, we're, we're back, we are, we are trying to guard the support collectively together. And I think that subcommittee needs to do some additional work and then report back through workshop to our boards, have attorneys look at it and review it, and then workshop it and then hopefully come to some joint resolution if that's the desire of the boards in the room.
Yeah, that's kind of the hope of the day, you know, before we got into our budget workshop. Most of our, I think all of our departments have went ahead and budgeted for this. I don't know if y'all have or not, but as we're moving forward into the budget year and then coming into the new year, I wanted to get on the front side of it so that come October 1st, when the budget's going into effect, that, you know, we were ready to, ready to act on it rather than trying to still talk about it and put it together.
We, we've had a contract and services line in our budget, I think it operates through Josh's call center as our IT director for the district. That's been there for all those years we've been doing business and it's, it's already been proposed and in the budget for hopeful adoption as we move forward. So it's, it's one of those things we've budgeted for and it's just, it's just operating under a different type of model. It's not a new expenditure and I think that's also part of the message is that, listen, we're not, we're not trying to spend new money on something. We're expending money we've already been spending, but getting a much better collaborative effort, collective effort for the use of those dollars. And so I think it's a win-win, I think it can be demonstrated that way.
I've got two more questions that are asked by Chairman, I don't know who to address with these questions because we're so used to going to our chairmen's. So, two questions, one of them is just simply, on the library system, do we, as a board of county commissioners, support any of our library districts' IT, IT department, or do they all do it on their own?
They do that predominantly through Hays Computers, I've telehas it.
So they're, they've got their own independent group?
To, to a great extent, yes.
Second question is direct towards you because, not that, I just felt like I was going to ask the question. I, I don't believe in creating positions for people. I believe that's wrong, I believe it's not. So my question is, is would you support this same, this same thing, same suggestion for us if you were not the person that the boards hired?
The short answer is yes. And I supported it on August 3rd of 2017 when I did a, when I did a security audit for the clerk's office. The, if I remember right, it was, one of the last two recommendations was that the county consider the establishment of a chief information security officer position. So, yes, sir?
Thank you for your honesty.
In all candor, though?
I don't think anybody's better for the job.
In all candor, the, the possibility of coming back to North Florida is very appealing to me. My wife getting four hours close to her grandchildren puts a lot of weight on my shoulders to support this.
Pressure's on, huh?
The pressure's on, it's on in my house, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I've worked for 21 and a half years in the environmental department and it's where that, I always told everybody if I did my job well, there wouldn't be anybody that knew my name. But if I job, if I did my job poorly, everybody would know my name. In this respect, I'd rather everybody not know my name. Whenever I look at what happened with Atlanta, you know, Atlanta has a, has a lot bigger tax base than we do. I guess it's just something that, I'm kind of like Mr. Roush, it scares the daylights out of me. Whenever Ricky, Amy spoke to me about this, it's where that, I think this is something that benefits all, I think it would put everyone on the same page. I think just the, I think being able to take a lot of the, a lot of the commodities of skill and then putting it together as far as purchasing power, I see that how that could also be another great thing to, as far as bundling and stuff on the bar. If we're buying Google licenses or things like that, it might be a chance to take and increase the, the numbers of those things as a group and get better discounts and things like that as to our purchasing of, of equipment. But it's where that, you know, I think it'd be great to have someone that can take and try and bring everyone together on the same page. Trying to work with all the different agencies.
Very, very. Have you talked to Sharon, tax collector's office, what's her?
I, is Sharon has, has her own system and she's had that for, for a long time. I haven't spoken to her about that. Mr. Jenkins, his office has recently come out on ours and that's why, why you're showing a way forward, but if there's going to be a fight, I don't think everyone needs to have a, have a voice on it that they're going to be protected. But, and, and Belinda has another, and, and.
The people I heard, yeah?
Yeah, it's where the, Belinda, we used to provide some support to them. But I think she works with a lot of other supervisor relations offices in order to try and bring it as where the personnel staff there is also amongst a lot of other offices.
There might be something different what they do, so.
Get there like a little consortium kind of a run through the supervisor's office.
Thing I, I would say also, it's where that our offices have worked, have worked so well again. Whenever we had the, the, the storm system, Mark Carter, I don't, I don't know what y'all paid, paid him, but he, he is underpaid. Because Mark, his, Mark was a, was a great asset for our office. And he saved our office hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to stop just by finding us in contact with people that could help us. Whenever we, we use y'all to take him as a, as a backup for our information. Randy's office has worked, worked great with us on a lot of different projects. Sheriff's office is where that, that Sean and Ron and the sheriff is where that, they've been excellent working alongside us. And then stuff like this, all of it, is where that, that that answer was correct. It's where it required everyone to work together, but it's where that, that it paid off as a huge dividends in the end. And they, they're often stronger as well as ours. I can't give enough credit to, to our staff and stuff, but it is where that, that just having someone that's able to coordinate, someone that's able to take him. I, I don't have the expertise, I'm going to be honest with you. And Ricky kind of brought that to the point, too, whenever we were talking to him. That's where I, I understand that. It's where that, that trying to bring someone to the table that understands it better is able to look at what the, what the vendors are taking and providing. Because, you know, sometimes whenever we look at vendors and stuff, it's tempting to go with the, with the lowest bidder. With technology, that's not always the best. It's not always the best scenario. We need something that's going to be able to take in and work with our system. And we also need something that's going to tie our systems together. It's where that, I, I think that's where something, I think that's where somebody evident is there. That's all I have here.
Is there any questions y'all have? Question. Really big question about allocation. I don't understand the risk factor allocations here. I would think that someone who is supporting our agencies, there would be a lot more support given to, provided for the school board, the north county commissioners, who would have a lot more computer systems, a lot more, there would be just a lot more IT, a lot more employees. So you recommended number two, model number two on that, but if we had a 20% split in comp allocations across the board from like the tax collector or the property pressure's office that happens near the number of employees would really be hit with some high cost that we would have to fund. So I guess that's what I'm, I'm wondering, would it rather, would, wouldn't there, why are we not looking at cost allocations based upon weight, based upon employee support?
That could certainly be one model. I'm not discounting that model.
But I don't understand the risk allocation model that you're talking about. I don't understand where the inclusiveness versus the adjusted allocation is.
The, this equal split allocation model is predicated upon the concept of the role, meaning that the concept of the role is compliance assurance and compliance governance.
Everybody's on the same page.
Right, right. As, as opposed to a per seat service desk type model.
Where people are on a different.
Right.
Okay, I understand that part now.
Ma'am, was that, did that clarify your question or we, we still have that outstanding review?
No, I think, I've listened and I'm getting a cure vision for what you're talking about.
I didn't want to miss.
So I have a comment and a question for you. Comment is, I think it's a great concept, I think it's a great idea. I, I do have a few concerns, as Chairman Taylor did, as far as, you know, working out some details and things of that matter. But if we were to implement this and everybody got on board with it, how long do you think it would take you to say, "Hey, I've got everything under one umbrella, I'm got a timeline of, of making us all secure?" Okay, I understand that, but the, the general question of when he would feel that way?
That question always causes me the most consternation.
Just saying, two, two months, two years?
And this is not, this is not the first time.
I understand it's job security, but I mean, just, you know.
This is not the first time I've been in this rodeo, so it's, you know, I kind of know the drill.
Sure.
By now. Seventeen years gives me a lot of insight. You're going to see, you're going to see some definitive orchestration within 45 to 60 days. You're going to see ownership, and I don't mean that negatively. I mean taking responsibility for those items that are there within three to six months. I know, I know where several of those delicate areas are within the county. I know where some of the, I know where some of the challenges are going to be. And when I say challenges, I don't mean anything that can't be overcome. I just.
Just identify and do.
Dive in.
Right.
You know. So, yeah, I, I feel comfortable with those numbers, 30 to 60 to get a handle on it and engagement with those roles and responsibilities in three to six months. Mr. Culp, Sheriff's Department, do you all have questions specific, anything?
A question.
Yes, sir.
You spoke of exposure earlier. So is there some type of credentialing or background check clearance type, security clearance that comes along with what you bring to it?
Yes, sir, and as a matter of fact, a certain amount of that has been done as of, I'm guessing.
You can talk a good game and show up and all of a sudden we're exposed.
Right.
In the military, you have certain security clearances and things like that and I'm sure you, going through these audits, have some type of credential that you, I don't know what they were.
Part of the credentialing I had to achieve with the sheriff's office when they designated me as local agency security officers, I had to go through the background, I had to go through the training.
Well, two.
SEJIS, FLE training, I had to do the fingerprint background investigation. And fortunately, fortunately, I think that was a very seamless process because after 24 years of military service, I walked away with a top secret clearance, so. Very valid question, thank you. I, I will extend my response by saying it is common for certifications to be associated with role of this, of this type.
All right, so in this position, would you require some of the other department types of people who are credentialed also? Or do they come with a specific area?
I think that's an evolutionary process. I, I hesitate to give you an answer right now. Credentialization is a two-edged sword. I've, I've achieved some of those credentials when I was in testing centers with people that had, they'd never seen a network or an information security appliance before in their life, but they, you know, did a, did their coursework in the class and they took the exam and passed. They'll never see a security appliance again in their life. But to answer your question, I think, you know, we're, we're in an age where credentials do make sense and I think some level of credentialization is beneficial. Yes, sir. On the line of exposure, my, my train of thought goes to, do you have additional employees or are you the, the person?
You did.
Here it is. My, my, my question being, we enter into this agreement, six months down the road, a year from now, God forbid, something happens and you are no longer. Sure. So, I mean, so then what's, and here we are, we're, we're into this, we're into this whole operation and our person, all of our executives have, have, in our executive basket, and the basket's no longer valid. So my question is, are you, do you have other folks that help you, that support you, or you, you're in? No, I'm not yet playing any match. My, my primary role, as I said, as I've known this position to exist in other organizations, is orchestrate, to define the standards we want to all operate under, okay? And impart knowledge, okay? Because the reality is, you know, any of us, any of us could approach end of life tomorrow.
Right.
Right? It would be doing Swanee County a disservice, it'd be you doing, everyone in this room personally a disservice to have me as one-stop shopping for information security, information protection for the county, compliance for the county, any of those, any of those terms that incur an obligation. My role is to digest the requirements as they come about, either through legislation or administrative action, to interpret those requirements, to identify how they relate to operations within Swanee County, school board, clerk's office, sheriff's office, whoever, and disseminate that information and to put process in place so that we can continue to demonstrate compliance irrespective of whether or not any colleague in that will disperse.
So our current IT support services that are in place now, would they answer, would they answer to anyone else or as far as compliance is concerned, they would answer to the compliance officer or the security officer?
Right.
But, but what about management, day-to-day activities of management? Would the security officer also oversee those departments as well and then therefore they?
I don't think, over the near term, because my understanding of, my understanding of statute is that that staff goes with the elected officials, okay? So they would stay with the elected official. This role, this committee that we're forming could potentially encompass some of those IT duties and responsibilities at some point in the future depending upon discretion, the scrutiny and the decision of the board of county commissioners and the school. But as the, as the position or the committee is defined pursuant to my knowledge today, those existing operational responsibilities stay with the department, those are the elected officials. Am I mistaken it?
No, that's, that's what we discussed.
So we'd be giving him the, giving him the authority to make the necessary changes in the, in all of the county agents, among all of the county agents?
in the, in all of the county agencies, among all of the county agencies that supports your position.
That.
People like David, they just gotta do what she said, right? Okay, I love that question.
But the understanding would be that, I mean, I mean, there wouldn't be total independence of that, I would think that this committee would not dictate.
Yes, sir.
You couldn't just arbitrarily say, my gosh, we're gonna do this, and if not, I'm taking my candy and going home. It's gotta go, somehow that has to go through that committee. The committee then begins to direct, and that's, that's, to me, the way I understand it, with it's on paper here, that's, that's who you answer to.
Exactly.
I would, I would have thought a little bit different. I would have thought that the committees, just like the boards, set the policy, and the, uh, and you would carry out the policy based on your recommendations, obviously, because the board would, the committee wouldn't have your expertise.
I would feel, I would exercise, this position would exercise some soft skills, if you will, to encourage compliance, and where the compliance could not be encouraged, then the committee would be the, would be ultimately the enforcement agent.
But you, I think, I think I get a veiled understanding of it better than before.
I think bottom line, from my, my perspective anyway, I think around here in the room, is there's consensus that this is something that we, we know we all need.
Sure.
It's, it's a matter of just now sitting down and hammering out details of how, you know, who answers to whom, and how this, you know, and how the thing works as far as the appropriations for this, I mean, it's one hundred and ten thousand dollars, even with the fifth entity coming into this, obviously that doesn't make an impact, but sooner or later, life being life, you know, sooner or later, there's gonna come a time when you're gonna say, I need more money. And then, and that's just, that's just the obvious, okay? So my thing is, we have a union, you know, this is not a bargain position, obviously, but it goes back to perception. So you come back in, and five years from now, you say, you know, based on, you know, market, based on whatever, whatever, I need a 20% increase. So that 20% then is farmed out to all those entities. And we're sitting here as the school board, and we're, we're helping fund this, and it's, and the newspaper picks it up, and it's a 20% increase for this position, yada, yada, yada. And we're sitting here, you know, legislature budgets, basically forty-seven cents per student, when they gave us this year, to sustain life, and folks are saying, you know, hey, my grocery bill's going up, bills costing me more, bills costing, gas is costing, and you're gonna give 20% increase here, you're telling me you can't give me anything, that type of thing. So that, to me, comes back to the, how do, how does all that work with that committee? And how do we, how do we handle that? I mean, that's, that's for another day and another time, but it's just one of those things that gives me great pause, great pause.
Well, gives me great pause is the fact that we're elected officials that may work really, really well together, but at some point, there's gonna be different elected officials that are gonna have to work together as well, and they may not have that benefit of having camaraderie that we did, and so.
And had you, had you structured the language of how that committee functions and operates, and it outlives people that are in positions of leadership or those elected positions now, and there's a way, obviously there's a way to do that, I don't know, that's for Mr. Dixon and the rep, maybe some other folks to, to hammer that out.
Those are well-established models in Florida, that sheriff's services model isn't that being successfully utilized through a number of municipalities.
Can I reelect it in terms of laws?
Right.
Yes, sir.
The key, key thing that was said was the fact that you, you set up ways to do things, okay? Set up, um.
Standards.
Standards, whatever. So you train everybody in each of the departments to follow these standards and, and to use them day in and day out. Basically, you're doing succession planning by doing that, so if something did happen, somebody in there could step up, because they've all done the same thing, the same way, and protecting all the entities, because no one's getting anything different than the other, is following the processes, basically setting up processes. Any well-run organization company has processes that have to follow, because if you don't, you shoot from the hip. So that's what I would expect if this happens, you'd set the processes up where everybody understands all the rules of the game, and then go forward with it, and then as you go forward with it, it's like my job was UPS, was succession planning, make sure somebody could do my job if I'm out there.
Yes, sir.
So, um, that's just the way I've always done things, the processes.
That's the way I worked for twenty-ten years. When I wore a uniform every day, I was training my relief. Yes, sir.
Well, I've heard your presentation, and, uh, when you first gave your presentation, it was like Greek to me, but, you know, now I've got more understanding, that's your job you're working at, and that's the interacting side of it. But, uh, I'm, I'm somewhat, somewhat like the superintendent said, lacking insurance, it's when you need that insurance. I just didn't show it, my daughter, I put alarms, she's come in the house some years ago, she said, Dad, it's like, uh, security guard watching us at night. So it's when you need it, you, you know, it's, it's a tool that we have to utilize, or you, I'm, you know what you're talking about, I, I have confidence in what you're saying and your way of talking, you know, I tried to understand the thing that you were saying. And I did jot down a few notes, which I won't go into, I'll just look over them tonight at another time, and, uh, I'm not only a professional, but I.
I'm sorry if I was made of used in pretty, uh, terminology, it was a little bit excessive.
Go with your tongue.
Yes, sir, it does.
Just a major, for me, one question, I know earlier that they talked about you being an employee versus a contract.
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you, maybe, maybe you guys can tell me the difference between why we want you as an employee versus a contract?
Give me one.
The difference between why we want you as an employee versus a contract?
The, the primary is because of cost, okay? I'll, I'll be honest with you about that. I've run professional services organizations, and actually I was speaking with someone just a, a couple of weeks ago about a potential engagement, and he was asking me about, uh, cost of services, uh, within professional services organizations for security services, and I said, without batting a eye, you go in at rat rate of $225 an hour. Well, my rate to Swan County right now is $125 an hour, which is significantly less than $225. But nonetheless, to that point of incrementing costs, you know, those costs are going up every year, you know? And this, it's fully expected with compliance things such as this Stoneman Act, so on and so forth, that security personnel are going to be commanding between $235 and $255 an hour next year. So that, that, there's, there's a financial advantage of bringing on an employee, as an employee. The, the additional advantage is that there's the incentive of working directly for elected officials as an employee, keeping that peacekeeping mission, so to speak. That peacekeeping mission may not necessarily be uppermost in the mind of someone such as myself in a contract role. In a contract role, it's, here's the job, do the job, okay? So I, I hope that helps.
I mean, I just, I was just hoping to make the difference of why I'm going to be an employee versus a contract.
Sure.
And on the second side of that, it is, is it's harder to be as an employee if they don't do their job, which is a common basis, but not saying that you wouldn't do your job, just saying just, you know, that's so.
In, in the security space, information security space, uh, the answer is, it doesn't really matter either way. If you're failing to do your job, it shows up as a vulnerability, as a compliance issue.
At least in this state, I'd say there's advantage, disadvantage, both advantages of having a contractor, so you can terminate a contract, but disadvantages for our elected board is that every time you get a new elected official, you could have a vote against your contract, and you could be doing a great job just because it's an popularity contest.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, I would rather spend the money on the benefits to go along with it, to have better control of the, of the.
Role.
Of the role.
Right.
Than we would have this potentially next year coming back with a 25% increase in them.
Sure.
Then we have to completely change maybe contractors, and we could have a completely different philosophy by it.
Right.
I know we're, we're scheduled this for two o'clock or three thirty, and I'm, it's past, we're past three thirty. There again, I think the consensus is, what I'm hearing in the room, I don't hear anybody say a different, is that we proceed with this, and it's perhaps a matter of where we go from here, Mr. Chairman, your, your board and your entities, and the legal, legal folks, and how we, you all meet, camera out, some of these things we've talked about here today, some of these issues.
That's what I would like to do, um, I think if everybody's kind of on a consensus and we're bored with it, that I don't know now if we, we turn it over to attorneys, to chairmen and the attorneys to hash out some details and to have something that we can present back to each board to review, um, and make sure we make it through the budget process, that I think it's good.
There again, you know, quality, expertise, insurance part of it, you know, I know enough to know that cybersecurity is, and it's just, it's, what would a lineup scare me with that? These are people that deal with it, they know how to deal with it, and we can all communicate with each other, especially because of all the things now, the school shootings, sheriff's departments, it's, it's just, it's just a win-win. But it's a matter of, you know, how do we, how do we bring it all together so that everybody's, everybody's agreeable, that everybody can move forward with it. And there again, it can, it can outlive our, our terms of elected office, so this, this thing moves on, because that's what we want. And I, I just want to say too, that it makes me very proud to be from Swan County, to see that we can, all these entities can come together in a room like this and talk about something like this, and nobody's, you know, this is my turf, my gosh, I'm like, you know, we're all here, we're serving the same constituents, obviously, and we're all wanting to work together. So I commend, I commend the board of county commissioners and all, all of you folks that are elected, everybody's in the room, the sheriff, you know, talk to everybody, because this truly is, is one of those, uh, one of those moments that just, once again, makes you proud to be from, from Swan County. But is there anything else?
No, I just, we'll tell you, we got a quick emergency meeting that we scheduled immediately following this meeting, so we're gonna hold it right here until I'm done. They will say five, ten minutes.
Okay.